At this time, Madam Clerk.
Well, Paul. Councilmember Wild.
Present.
Councilmember Gomes.
Present.
Councilmember Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Billiard. Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Colleen. Councilmember Baker.
Present.
Also present is Mayor Edwards, the City Manager, Mr. Donald, City Attorney, Miss Walker. You have a floor.
Thank you. At this time, we will have invocation by Pastor Henry from about the prayer committee. Those of you that would mind standing, would you please stand with us? Let us pray. Dear gracious God, we are so grateful and thankful for who you are and for who you made us to become. A great city with great leadership. We know that's because of God you have empowered us with your wisdom, your knowledge, and your might. A love for our people and most of all, a love for each other. Continue to show yourself throughout tonight through the speaking and all that is said and done. Allow us to see you as we look at each other. And we will forever give you the praise and the honor and the glory. Let us all say, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, whose it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you Pastor, Madam Clerk.
Next on the agenda is presentation, but that has been moved to the consent agenda. So we have adoption of the council agenda.
You've moved it to the consent agenda?
It has been moved to, Councilmember Wild, as said, be moved to the consent agenda.
Can I make a motion to move the...
Wait a minute, hold up. You can add that to the consent agenda? You can add to the consent agenda?
Yes, until the agenda has been approved.
Is that correct?
You've actually created a motion for the acting of the corporation that you agreed not to add to the consent agenda.
That's correct. That's what I thought.
Okay, do I make a motion to add it to the next meeting? It's already been...
That's good.
Exactly.
That's good. I don't think we need a motion for it. That's good. No, we have done it in the consent agenda.
Okay. I mean, I need to move something.
Right. We're at the proper space to approve the council agenda. And that's where all moves and changes need to be done.
Okay, I need to...
Can we vote to remove this from the agenda to add to the consent agenda for the next meeting?
Do we need to have a motion for that?
We can amend the agenda.
You can either do a motion or you can submit it, the scanner response is either repeat or...
But you feel good with a motion, let's go.
I am because it's on the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I made a motion to remove the proclamation of Kendall Henry Day and add it to the consent agenda for our next regular scheduled meeting.
Proportion seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
No, 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 no.
No, I know where you are going. Let me get this motion passed.
Okay, you agree with it.
Let's vote, please. Okay, that passes.
No, but I need to take this. This move to the regular agenda.
I understand, Ms. Jackson. We just want to take care of that first. Okay, all right. Now, Ms. Jackson, who are you back here?
I would like to move this number five, approval of IGA with City of College Park regarding Sierra Townhouse. I need to embed to the regular agenda for discussion.
Item number eight.
Ms. Jackson?
It's the council approval of IGA with the City of College Park regarding Sierra Townhouse.
Okay, number eight.
I would like that moved to the regular agenda.
Okay.
Ms. Jackson, I would agree with you, but I would like to do one other thing. And that is, is that it was inadvertently put on that by myself. It was inadvertently put there. What I wanted to put it in was the executive session. Because we haven't had a chance to discuss it.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, so if you would agree with me, I think the best place would be would be the executive session in terms of rules. Yes.
Are we going to vote on it?
What I'm trying to do, Attorney, is, yeah, I mean, you still want to do your thing.
No, I'm just saying we can take a vote.
What if we have an executive session before you, that's the way we just did it in the process? Because there's other things to conclude, it's an executive session. I was trying to move this agenda along so we could have the one executive session. But it's the board's decision. I'm just saying, the reason why I want to do it because I inadvertently put it on this. And we need to have some discussion about it. Is it time sensitive? Do we have to decide it this week?
What, Sierra?
Do we have to vote on this IGA this morning?
We need to vote tonight. We've put too much work into this.
Mr. Donald, we were in a minute. Was it, Mr. Donald? I don't recall it being time sensitive, is it?
From what I remember, they presented it to you to have a conversation with your board. So I don't think it went much further than that. I haven't seen it, so I don't know.
We want to go, we have to go to the executive session anyway.
Okay, no, all I'm saying is, we have been working on Sierra since 2018.
So can we remove this? Can I move that we remove the approval of the IGA with City College Park regarding Sierra Towns from the agenda?
Councilmember Jackson has that motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, I'm not going to, I'm going to properly move the second. And to remove it from the agenda and put it on to the regular agenda. There's two different things. She wants to remove it completely. She wants to remove it to the...
No, I want to remove it completely. We can remove it completely, fine.
May I make a friendly amendment?
Because I'm not going to talk about it.
Can I make a friendly amendment to remove the council approval of IGA with City College Park regarding Sierra Towns from the agenda?
Second, you second moving it to the agenda?
The consent agenda and take it to the regular agenda.
That's the motion that's on the floor, and I think it's been seconded. Am I correct?
Right.
So it's to remove it from the consent agenda to put it on to the regular agenda. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
But I got to carry this motion. Any discussion?
I made a friendly amendment to the motion. I made a friendly amendment to the motion to remove it from the agenda, period.
Did you accept that friendly amendment? She did not accept it. Okay, so...
Well, we have to vote on it. She came to say no.
No, they didn't want to talk about it. We need to shut this down tonight. I'm going to shut it down tonight.
I don't know what everybody talking about shutting down. I'm just talking about a discussion about an issue. I don't know about shutting nothing down. There's a motion on the floor. Madam Attorney, there's a friendly amendment. You want to pine on it?
So if Councilwoman Jackson is not acceptable to amending her motion, then you would vote on her motion. And then after that, if it fails, then you vote on the alternative motion by Councilwoman.
So the motion on the floor by Councilwoman Jackson is to remove it from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, am I correct? Okay, that's what we're voting on. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion? That passes. Looks like the house. Madam Clerk?
Are there any more changes to the council agenda? If not, you need a motion to approve the council agenda with the...
Okay. I have one. I would like to move that we amend the regular meeting agenda to reconsider the resolution adopted at our last meeting approving the URA map. I move that we amend the URA area and map to exclude the Meadows Operations Center.
Well, if you would move to make those adjustments if the council votes to approve reconsidering the map. And then you would make the adjustments when it comes back.
So you want to make a motion now to reconsider the map?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that we amend the URA area and map to exclude the Meadows...
No, no.
You just want to...
That's not what she said.
I just, well, I just said it.
No, you're moving to reconsider that the council will vote on that and you will put it back on the agenda.
Okay, I'm doing what you just said.
I say that. I assume you got it right.
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That passes. Now, I think Ms. Jackson tells the second part of that one.
No.
No second part?
Not yet. You still have not approved the agenda with the changes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the amended changes.
Second.
Properly move the second in discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes. Before we get to that. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Next item is the two, the city council minutes from July 11.
I would like to...
Go right there.
I want to make a motion to amend the June 11 minutes to recognize my co-sponsorship of ordinance 2019-013.
Properly move the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes.
And I make a motion to approve the city council.
Properly move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes. Madam Clerk?
Approval of the June 19 special community minutes?
I make a motion to approve the special community minutes from July 19.
So...
Properly move the second. Discussion?
The discussion is really about after discussion, the council agrees to the following 2020 budget priorities. But in those budget priorities, there really is nothing about development. And development was discussed in at least three items. So I'm wondering why it was not included in those last items. The only thing that even remotely deals with development was grow the percentage of revenue from commercial businesses. But that's still been speak to development. Councilman Gomes talked about development. Councilwoman Jackson talked about development. And development, and Councilman Colleen talked about development.
So you're saying that the word was not used?
Right. Specifically, development was not listed as one of the priorities.
Madam Clerk, do you want to adjust that for your amendment?
So with that correction, are there any more corrections?
This is kind of minor, but still, I think that it needs a little bit of tweaking where it says on page... But on the top of the page, we hear on the second paragraph, second sentence, where we end where it says park and subdivision amenities. I don't think the word subdivision should be there because the city wouldn't be doing anything with subdivision amenities. But it would be a park. Because I think the word subdivision is becoming...
Yes, ma'am.
Hold up.
Actually, I do recall we had a discussion about subdivision amenities. From the standpoint, we talked about larger scale communities, if you recall, making sure that they include their green common spaces. We actually did have... We talked about that from a standard standpoint. We did have a discussion.
So that needs to be added to the item.
I just wanted, I just didn't want to admit it. However, we amended, we did have some discussion about that.
I think it need to be added as an item. Madam Clerk? I think it need to be added as an item.
As a budget party?
Yes, yes, yes. Because the discussion was really about subdivisions and how large they are and don't have any amenities for anybody to do anything.
Are there any other changes? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Speakers will be granted a total of two minutes each, and public comments will not exceed 30 minutes. Speaker will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves and their address as far as speaking. Speakers may only address the presiding officer shall observe all rules of the court. No debate, disrespect, or obscenity shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall move any such individual out of court if they have to comply. We have three speakers. Please line up as I call your names. Ms. Ivory Denson, Steve Little, and Liz Miller.
Good evening. Ivory Denson, District 2. I want to speak in terms of a service that I experienced provided from one of the vendors. That's Jacobs, who I understand is providing spiritual right of ways and tree fall and things like this. About two weeks ago, I get my power from Greystone. A tree fell early morning. Snapped the electricity, and I was totally out. When I'm out, I'm totally out because I have well water. And eventually, when Greystone came out to try to address the problem, the tree was crossed a bender. And they tried for about an hour to get it cut and couldn't get it removed. And so they called Jacobs. And when Jacobs came, you would have thought that common sense would have told them to, if you see a barricade, if you see a, do not cross the line, that they would have put that tape back up. They didn't. And people continued to come from inner road, headed west toward Union Road, and would turn around in my driveway, and that went on for over an hour. And when Jacobs was called, they finally did send somebody out there. Greystone called them. Now, Greystone brought this equipment, could not get that tree cut out. Why would they send out one man with equipment that was insufficient? He had to go back and get somebody else coming up. I mean, this is service that I don't expect. It was very poor. I don't know what the contract says. But, you know, we're talking about paying people, and paying people a lot, maybe a little bit other places or pay. But they need to deliver a better service. This was unacceptable to me. And I went out there and parked my car. I called the City of South Fulton Police Department. They came out there and had police cars up there by the tree and stare at the street so people wouldn't get down that far. Some things to me are just common sense. When you go to your job, you shouldn't leave your brains at home. And you should use common sense. And it was an inconvenience. This went on for several hours. So please address these how you people are performing their contracts. Because we pay too much money, we expect, and we should receive better service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Steve Little. I'm in District 1. And I'm at 220 Milano Drive, and my neighbor.
Ryan Morton, and I'm at 210 Milano Drive.
We're here tonight to kind of find out where our request for de-annexation is. We submitted, we attempted to submit back in March, but we're told that the process was under review by the city attorney. Then hearing nothing for quite a while. We sent each of you a certified copy of the request or the application. And it's been almost seven weeks, and we've not heard anything from you. And then we see on the agenda from the other month, last month, you've approved or reviewed, approved an annexation, which is a much more lengthy process. De-annexation, as you know, is just a matter of you guys reviewing it and passing it on to the folks over at county, Randy Beck's office, and they go from there. So just, we want to know where it is and why you're stonewalling.
I'm sure she'll get with you.
Pardon?
The attorney will get with you.
That's what we were told, like, two months ago, three months ago.
It'll be back tonight.
Oh, tonight, okay. Sure, okay.
I'm Liz Miller. I didn't think I was going to come tonight. Other people were supposed to come, so I really don't have anything organized. I will tell you what's going on in our community. I'm in District 7. So I live on Lee's Mill Road, and that connects to Gordon Road, which connects to Fayetteville Road. So what our problem is, right at this moment, is people are just speeding through our two little roads. There's no speed limit signs, firstly. Going from the south to the north, there's no speed limit signs. It is supposed to be 25 miles an hour. People go from Peachtree City, cut through our little road to get to the interstate. It is, we have so many older people on our road. We have children. We have animals. And it's just absurd how fast they go. So what my little community, Fife, is asking for, we need to know how we can put some speed bumps something on our roads. I understand that we may have to pay for them. We're fine with that. I don't know what we need to do with that. But these people have got to respect our little community and not just fly through our, you know, community. Another thing that I know that we've spoken about last year possibly, I know CSX is a big, big deal. Nobody can do anything about CSX. But I don't know if it's possibly a thought to put some kind of electronic sign. So I don't know how many of you are, you know, know about our little district. So if you, Mayor Edwards, are talking about like the Shell Station on Oakley, so if there were a sign to go there that says the railroad's blocked, then they could go just straight on Oakley. Mr. Baker, you know that. And then if it were coming from the other way from Fayetteville and say the railroad's blocked, they could go that way as well and not come and transfer trucks. And everybody and their grandmother and brother turn around in our little community. Thank you.
All right.
Next is public comments. Next is consent, approval of the consent agenda. Items four, items five, six, seven, and nine.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda within the second.
Properly move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Next is the previous agenda. Council's second reading and approval to amend the ordinance 2019-007, animal and livestock control. Councilmember Gomes.
I don't entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the livestock ordinance.
Properly move the second. Any discussion?
Yes. So there... I... So the first thing for section 17-1003 regarding the tagging and identification of livestock, I would like for the city attorney to, I guess, speak to the language that we are going to incorporate in this ordinance regarding that.
So we have two options here. Fulton County has provisions in their code regarding registration, tagging of animals. We need to rely on Fulton County and then just ask them to enforce the tagging and registration requirements. Or we can implement tagging and registration requirements within our own ordinance. My only suggestion is that if we do that, we also discuss administratively how we're going to enforce the tagging and registration if we acquire that responsibility.
So I guess my question would probably be to the city manager. Would you think that's something that we could take in-house or we should allow Fulton County to continue? My understanding is that they're technically not enforcing it because we do have animals that we are not able to identify that are out of bounds. So do we have the capacity to do it in-house?
So we won't have the capacity today, but we are developing the 2020 budget. So if this is a priority in the will of the council, then we can likely incorporate some type of enhancement to code enforcement and maybe even police to address it. Of course, the low hanging fruit is to work with Fulton County and compel them to enforce the laws that are on their books. And so I think it's really just the pleasure of the council, but the timing is good because we are developing the FY20 budget now.
Well, I think we would have better control over identifying these loose animals. So if that is something that we can effectively take on, I would like to see that as part of the city.
Would you be able to make the effective date or the implementation of the ordinance, will we be able to align it with FY20? And I guess what I'd be asking is, we would lean on Fulton County's ordinance for enforcement now. And then when we're able to add funds and resources, we begin enforcing. Is that possible?
As long as we have a day of room, we'll take it over in-house.
I pulled up section 2 that Fulton County has, and it says, "In order to maintain a centrally located record of all vaccinated dogs, cats, or other animals kept, maintained, and harbored in any area of Fulton County, including those within corporate limits, etc.," it says, "The owner, custodian, or harborer of such dog, cat, and other animal is required to apply to the Fulton County Animal Control Shelter for a vaccination license tag." So I think that's what's not being, one of the issues you're facing is just that's not being enforced.
So I would like to see that in there. And then also to, another council person brought this to my attention. Section 17-1011. If we could add language in there that says gravely injured or life threatening, we don't want people to think that we're technically putting down their animals if they're impounded. So being pet friendly and all friendly by adding that language in there. So it's in section A. "Every animal impounded under the provisions of this title, which is found upon arrival at the animal control shelter, to be diseased or at a gravely injured or life threatening and whose ownership is unknown or to relinquish some right, he shall, at the discretion of the city manager or entity, will be able to make the decision to put them down." I know that's a lot on you, the city manager.
You have a change here.
It's just a change.
All right. Any other discretion or decision? Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes. Madam Clerk?
Next item is council...
Turn off all cell phone. He did that back there.
Second, approval of a hotel motel tax ordinance. Councilmember Gomes, I mean Willis, I'm sorry.
Yes, this is a result of working with House Representative Derrick Jackson on House Bill 611, hotel motel tax. This is an ordinance that would allow the ability of City of South Fulton to collect at a rate of 8% versus the 5% that is currently collecting. I move that we approve the amending hotel motel tax ordinance.
Second, properly move the second. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
This is just clarifying. I know in the resolution, it speaks to hotels and defining it. But the definition is actually in a where as statement. So I wanted to make sure that we captured all those categories. So it's only, there's no definition for hotels. We talk about it and describe it in a where as statement, but not in the ordinance.
but not in the ordinance, and I just want to make sure there won't be any confusion.
Oh, she's talking. What I do is, because that's a leaking question.
I just don't want us to miss, you know, miss all those categories.
That's a question that we've, so we can move on.
Madam?
Madam Attorney?
Madam Attorney, we just need to ask one question. Councilwoman Rob, will you, you again?
So, um, this particular ordinance just describes hotel that this would be levying on hotels. But there's no definition. But in the where as statement, I want to do before, if whereas, it seems like that's the definition of hotel that would apply to taxation, would apply to all those categories, but there's no definition in the ordinance. I just want to make sure that's not a problem.
So you're saying in the existing hotel motel taxation ordinance, there's not a definition or there's?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this particular ordinance. And what you have in the if whereas, you kind of define that it would be levying under, you know, hotel, motel, and lodge tours camp. You define all of that in this if whereas, but in the ordinance, there's no definition. And usually your where as is, would that be covered? Or do we need a definition?
Is this the entire ordinance or just the?
This is in the middle.
So I'm pretty sure, I have the, the ordinance, but I'm pretty sure we define, we give specific definitions within the.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to, I want to convince that, that's all I'm asking.
Okay? All those in favor? That passes. Madam?
Next is the second reading and approval of firefighter mediation ordinance.
I move that we approve, uh, the firefighters mediation ordinance.
Proper move to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Council's second reading and approval to amend ordinance Title I Administration Ethics.
Proper move to second, any discussion? Oh, good. You good? All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Next item will be the council approval of the IGA with City of College Park regarding Sierra Town Homes.
Wait, that's, that's not the next one, is it?
That's the next one on the line.
This is the, bring that to the regular agenda.
Give me, I'm getting a cue. You can't give me cues, so let me just get your name.
Oh, we can, oh. I, um, I guess I was kind of thrown back when I looked at this. We have been working with Sierra Town Homes as well as the store in that area. We've been working with this since 2018. And, um, as far as the store next door to it, we assisted in closing that down. There was a lot of gang activity, drug activity. And Sierra Town Homes and city manager, you're well aware. You had Ms. Melanie Winfield. She attended the meetings you did not attend. But we started this last year, and we have been successful in clearing that area out totally as far as, not totally, but we don't have the traffic that we had in the past. And I'm just trying to find out how we came about getting an IGA with College Park. Now, College Park, and it's obvious because Code went out and did a sweep. They found so many violations. They found the mole. They found where the ceiling dropped on the young lady. But we're willing to undo the good that we've already done and allow College Park to take over because right now we have, we have taken them to court. For many things, we're waiting on their attorney to get back with our attorney because we're wanting them to use one of the three mole inspectors that we chose because the other one, we did not know if he was licensed or whatever from the owner. But we have had, our police, and Chief is back there sitting, we have, if you'll come up, Chief Police, we have had a lot of issues with Sierra. And to, for all the work that we have done since 2018 to turn around and say we're gonna allow College Park to do the code inspection, do the permits for that, that, there's something wrong with that. Why would College Park want to do that and allow us to still get the tax dollars? Doesn't that sound fishy to you? It, it sounds fishy to me. Because, okay, you want, I'm gonna let you keep the taxes.
It's not you.
No, no, no. What I'm saying, what they're saying to us, we're gonna let you keep the taxes, but allow us to get the permit. So you're saying that you want our residents to still have substandard living conditions. You want us to still live with gang infestation. Right next door, in District Five, we have sandpipers code. These people are sleeping well now. In the Meadows, they are sleeping well because they don't have to duck and dodge bullets like they have been doing for the past year. When we came in in 2017, we hit the ground running. Chief, you know what's been going on over there.
Yes, ma'am.
And now what they're doing, they're running from Sierra to the, um, what you call that mall, the discount mall? No, they're going to discount mall. And, and, and we just had a shooting over there, what, a month ago?
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody got shot in the leg running the drugs. I mean, I don't know, I didn't see the drugs. But all I'm saying is, running back and forth. Now, if we have made this progress by cleaning up that corner, and it was, it was like they were selling gas there, and there is no gas station there. You couldn't even walk on that street. Now you can walk, no problem. So we're gonna undo what we done? That makes no sense to us. So I, I just, I, I just.
So, council member, I think they directed the questions at me, and unfortunately I wouldn't have the answers for it.
Oh, well, I guess I need to ask you, did College Park come to us?
Yeah, so what happened was College Park approached the City of South Fulton with this proposal. And in lieu of trying to figure it out, what we instructed them to do is, whatever they're proposing, put it in writing so that we could bring it to the council to get your feelings on it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
You knew we had been meeting on this since 2018. You knew we have all this code enforcement time. You knew we took code enforcement in, in that entire complex and walked that, walked every unit in that entire complex. Police have been in there left and right. And you're saying that you did not even think enough to say, "Councilwoman Jackson, you know, what's going on with that area?" I know it does say in the charter that, you know, what you deemed necessary, but I think you should have contacted somebody.
I think you have a complete misunderstanding and misrepresentation of what occurred. So, Mayor, you probably have to chime in here, but what occurred was that the two mayors had a conversation, and when they had a conversation, they had decided to create something that the council could review. And so your city manager instructed them to bring something back to the council because none of us are subject matter experts on what they would desire to do. And so as such, my knowledge of all of the activities that had occurred and any other interaction don't relate to this manner because it's not a proposal that your city manager reviewed, developed, or had a conversation about.
Oh, I appreciate you. So what I'm saying is, what I would like to go back to the City of College Park. There is a apartment complex down the street, which is called Southampton. And that's where the gang activity went. Am I correct, Chief?
Between there and this campus.
Okay, so that particular apartment complex, that's, um, is with District Five, and that's the City of College Park. So to me, that's where they should have been doing the IGA.
Actually, parts of Southampton fall within our jurisdiction as well.
Part of that, but I'm saying, I said District Five is part of that. That's to this South Fulton, and College Park has the other.
Well, I mean, Southampton is actually split in half. Half of that complex belongs to College Park, and the other half belongs to the City of South Fulton.
That's what I'm saying. So it would have seemed to me that that's where you would have been trying to do an IGA. So that tells me that they are trying to avoid what we were trying to get code enforcement to do, fixing that property up. Because other than that, it would be no reason.
Well, I think as a council, I mean, the instructions to them were, they had a proposal to bring it to the city, and I think the city could simply say, "No", "Yes", or "Instead of your proposal, this is what we like". But I think the best thing to do is when a city approaches you about something, you listen, and then you give them a response. And I don't think that's what the mayor was attempting to do with this activity, is bring it before the council, let the council give their insights, and then respond back to College Park appropriately. And it sounds as if you've spoken loudly. And so if your colleagues agree, that's, that would be how the city could move forward.
Chief? When we first started our initiative down at, at the Sierra Town Homes, we were getting roughly around seventeen nine-one-one calls every day. We started working with Pete and the, and the management there. Our gang unit was heavily involved, and Councilwoman is right, we were able to displace a lot of that drug activity that was taking place at Sierra. And it did go over to the discount mall. We've reached out to College Park in an effort to try to help get a handle on the enforcement, but it's my understanding the same investment group has purchased the discount mall as well. And so it's gonna be something that we'll have to continue to work on collaboratively because it's my understanding the problem has just been a little displaced, and we, we really need to get our hands on it.
But, and, but can I say this, since we have been working on it, it, it appears that the management at Sierra is doing more work. They're, they're, they're more conscientious about it. But if we turn that over to the City of College Park, I'm sorry.
And our nine-one-one calls went from seventeen a day to one complex down to four. Okay, Ms. Rowland?
I, I just want to say that this, it appears to be, to me, I'm concerned about the lack of communication around this. Because, yes, I am concerned about the lack of communication because this council passed an additional ordinance that says that when there's developmental issues, or not issues, when there's development, when there's development matters in people's districts that they govern, the conversation should engage the person who represents that area. And for this discussion to come up for the first time before the full body, or not only the full body, the person that represents the area, you know, this is a concern that I have and I consistently have. And communication is everything. And there's no reason we should be discussing this before the full body without the council person knowing what's going on. Whether it's, you know, College Park, they know, they know, Ms. Jackson.
Listen, I, I'll tell you now, I'm gonna sit here and take beating for you all day, but I'm gonna have to step up and say something. Now, you're talking as if that ordinance, which applies to staff, is something, you're right, if we were in compliance with it. But I think it is understandable that if two mayors have a conversation, that if they decide how they bring it back to the council, then they have an opportunity to do that. And so, again, my ask, or what was asked of me is, is hey, when this comes forward, how should we do it? I said, "Well, you need to bring it back before the council before you have any discussions about it."
Attorney Walker, no, it's not that simple. Attorney Walker, could you please explain what the communication ordinance that this council passed says as it relates to the development?
If it is brought to your city manager.
And I'm talking to Attorney Walker. Attorney Walker, could you please explain how the communication is supposed to go when it relates to development in the areas that people govern?
For clarity, may I ask you a question?
Attorney Walker, I'm asking, I, I spoke, I'm a Republican attorney. With all due respect, Mr. Donald, I have asked Attorney Walker a question.
Okay, I am pulling up the legislation. If you can give me about two minutes, and maybe we can go to the, the next person who wants to discuss.
I don't know the same thing. Ken, uh, Mayor, can you provide some background on what led to this particular ordinance or IGA coming forth? Because based on with the city manager, it sounds like he might not have been fully in the, that's what I heard. So I just want to understand where this came from and why.
That's what we all want to hear.
Okay. Thank you. I'd be more than happy to do that. The mayor of College Park. The mayor of College Park approached me. They have a, a development, they have a development of regional impact going on in College Park, which includes the Richway, it includes the, uh, the little discount mall, all that whole area over there. Realizing College Park is the front door to Old National. And that they're about to put something out there by the same owner that's going to be substantially, going to substantially impact the area of Old National. I engaged in a conversation with him. In doing the, in doing the land that they need to provide to do this development of regional impact, he said that they would need the area where it's now in Sierra. We would not annex the property to him. We will receive all of the, we will receive all of the tax money. He owns the property. He's gonna tear Sierra down. And I talked to you, Chief, and I talked about it. And we talked about the impact in terms of crime and things of this nature. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not trying to have an argument today. I'm just trying to have a conversation. Because if we leave here tomorrow, but tomorrow we tell College Park Mayor and City of College Park, we don't want to have nothing to do with it, we continue to go on the way we're doing, no problem. But it is gonna, that, that development is gonna be of regional importance. This is our opportunity to collaborate with another city to make it happen. There will not be any Sierra there to do anything with. Chief has already told me that most of those people with Sierra are not in Biscay right now. And so that's, that's all this conversation is about. It's about enabling another city to do something that will help our city because they do open the front door. And Don, we talked about this for years on Old National Highway. The College Park owns the front door. We need something to be done at the front door. So that's kind of where, where it all started. Ms. Rowland?
I recognize you said that you inadvertently put this on, but I think the entire council would have appreciated to understand with this project, whatever it is, developmental impact project, because hearing about it after the fact, you get a different reaction. So I think it would be appropriate for the City of College Park to see whatever this project is so we could at least look at it before we take any action.
And Ms. Rowland, that's no problem.
Yeah, they, they, I think they should come present.
That's not a problem. Okay, Ms., you had, are you ready?
Yes, so the.
She's going back to. Go ahead.
The resolution provides the city manager and ordinance as it needs, such calls for all written development proposals concerning the city to be submitted to the mayor and city council. Provinced one business day of the city manager to proceed with such agreement.
So. So my question is, and I, and I'll go back to what Councilwoman Rob said. I think it would, we all would have appreciated. It's almost like we've blindsided a little bit. And then, most importantly, I feel like the first conversation, I, I can appreciate the mayor's having a discussion, but the first conversation aside of the mayor's having a discussion is, should have been with the person who represents the area.
Okay. May I ask a question? I want to make sure that I, I want to make sure that I remain in compliance. So we, within receiving the actual document, within one day, it should go to the mayor and council, correct? And so from what I understand is, once the mayors had a conversation and they provided the document. And so from what I understand is, once the mayors had a conversation and they provided the document, that's exactly what occurred. I understand, but what you, what I'm supposed to do, because remember, I'm not a part of this conversation. Upon receipt, it was directed to the mayor and it was forwarded there. And I believe, because I think there's a misunderstanding about what occurred, and I'm attempting to provide that clarity, is they had a conversation. They agreed to bring it back in executive session between the two councils. It's what they agreed to. The document is sent to the city. The mayor has it in compliance with the ordinance. The mayor attempts to have the conversation within days with the council in private session. The mayor inadvertently puts it on the agenda instead of having it behind closed doors. I think what you just discussed was a development project being brought to the city manager. That has not occurred in this instance. And so I think that's where the confusion might be.
Okay, so what I, I, you know, I don't feel like we have to legislate, legislate courtesy. And so, but if we have to legislate courtesy, we will. Uh, you know, I just think that, I just feel that since this is being done in the person who, the person who represents the area, all I'm saying should have been communicated to. I'm not saying not come, this is not the first time we should be seeing this. This is the first time the person who represents the area is seeing this, and this is the first time the full body is seeing this.
How could I have communicated differently in a conversation I wasn't involved in? I guess that's what I'm confused about.
Okay, I'm gonna help you out. I'll, I'll get you out of this.
All right, okay, okay, let's, uh, I think. We have a motion on the floor.
There's a motion.
There is no motion?
There's no motion.
Okay, Mr. Kalid, go ahead and go recognize. I got you, girl.
Yeah, I. There's a, there's a lot flying around. I, I, I think the, the reason that we are having this conversation. Well, let me just, let me speak for myself. This is not the first time that this has happened. A lot of people outside of government in the, in the development community, they do not know how municipal ordinance work. They don't know about strong mayor, strong city manager. They don't know any of that stuff. They look at a city, they say, who is the mayor? They call the mayor's office. And so I think that it's just very important that when that call is made to the mayor's office, that at that moment, that council person that represents that district is called to the table. This isn't about, with all due respect, this isn't about me, Mr. City Manager. When that call comes to the mayor's office, because of the form of government that we have, and really just as a district courtesy, we have got to include people. There, there have been times where people have called and asked me about a project, about a parcel on Old National, and I say, that's not my district. That's Councilman Baker. We need to call Councilman Baker. And so that's. I, I, sometimes courtesy and character, I don't know that we have to legislate all of those things. We just gotta be, we just gotta consistently practice that. That's it.
All right, Ms. Gillian?
Really what we're talking about is communication. And yeah, communication problem. And the communication problem really is this. This should never have been put on. This should never have been put on the agenda without at least, the button's on, without at least the council person in the district knowing about it. Whatever happens, the people in the district are always going to come to the council people first. That's what you voted for. And that's what we are supposed to do. We're supposed, we're the first line for you to come to for whatever. So I'm not trying to beat up on anyone, but I am saying that now we're hearing that it's gonna be torn down. I mean, that's a step, even a step further than what we even knew in our agenda. So it's even bigger than, than we're talking about. So I'm just saying that we don't really need to legislate it, but we do need to have, as Councilman Kalid said, we need to have the courtesy, as you said, as Ms. Rowland said, we all need to have that courtesy. And then we wouldn't be arguing. We wouldn't be fighting. Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having confusion. Okay, I use the word confusion. We would not have confusion because everything would be on, out in the open for us to discuss.
Okay, Mr. Baker?
Not gonna kick it there, but I will say this, real simple. This is an example of what we were talking about when we had the legislation to come up to discuss how we would change the format of our council meetings. When we said, okay, we'll have one meeting, there'll be a work session where we'll discuss these items, and then the next meeting will vote. And I had paused because I was concerned about things being on the consent agenda. Like, I know Councilwoman Gillian just made the comment about it being on the agenda, but this was an item that was on the consent agendas. Which means if we would not have identified and imported, which is all of the stuff that you guys huff and puff when we're doing at the beginning of the meeting, which means it would have, some, it would have been law. It wouldn't have been legislated. So I just think we should keep that in mind. But I wanna yield my, uh, I wanna yield to Jackson so she can go ahead and, uh, make her motion to the.
She wants to make a motion, but take a second, give her one second.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Madam Clerk, uh, I came to you and I told you that this was an inadvertent mistake on my part. You've been on the consent agenda. I even asked, I said, and Mr. Donald can testify to this, should I send a letter out, should I send an email out to everybody letting them know that it was inadvertent by me? All right? And you said, no, we'll do it at, you just move it off into executive session at the meeting. So, Mr. Baker, it was not intentional for us to put on a consent agenda board to go through, not only would you feel that it was. Uh, what I was trying to get through, through inadvertent putting it there, was a conversation about real estate in the back. Go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
Um, I would just like to say, and I'm, uh, it was like a slap in the face. Because we have been working on this to clean that corner up since I walked in two thousand seventeen. And we have cleaned that corner up. And for somebody to say, as far as code enforcement, and when I say we, the police, code enforcement, everybody, they have worked diligently to at least have the Meadows and Sandpiper's Code and any other residents that wanna walk in Godbe Place in that area to give them some peace. So for this to happen, yes, I, I was ready for this being denied. So all I'm just saying is, I just wanna make a, a move to deny this.
Property move to second for denial. Any further discussion? Uh, Madam, Ms. Rowland and Kamala Lee, you had to go. Go ahead.
Based on the, based on the proposal, I think a council would approve on demolish the bill.
They're not gonna demolish that bill. He just don't wanna let through our code enforcement.
Like I said.
That's all it is.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, I just have a question. How did it get so far with even the draft of the IGA to be put on the agenda? Who drafts the IGA?
How's it going?
Call for a vote?
Okay, all right. Hearing the word, all those in favor? Okay, that passes. Motion to deny, pass. Next?
Next item is the reconsideration of URA map. Ms. Jackson, Councilwoman Jackson.
Oh, I move to, um, that we amend the URA area and map to exclude the Meadows Operations Center and to include parcels within the city located at fifty-one twenty-five Godbe Place, fifty-one thirty-five Godbe Place. And there's some land there, Godbe Place.
Property move to second, any discussion?
I think the third one is zero Godbe Road.
That's the address?
Zero.
Okay, zero Godbe, Godbe Road.
That's also identified in the tax system.
Oh, really? Okay.
Property, property move to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Next item on the agenda is council approval of an intimate IGA with Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections to serve as superintendent and to perform any and all functions to conduct City of South Fulton's twenty nineteen municipal election in the amount of five hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
I'll entertain a motion.
Two hundred and ninety-three, I'm sorry.
I have a question, actually.
Go right here.
I'm sorry. So, so I, I did ask about the, uh, putting the, the questions on, um, about, but I, I had another one. And that is, if we could get some timeline from the Board of Elections. I'm not clear about, uh, our new voting machines, if they're going to be available by November or not. And if they are, if we could have them both, if we could have at least one beforehand, maybe set up in City Hall or in Stonewall Tower where people could come and practice and see the machines.
Uh, Councilwoman Kalid, I think we had a conversation about this previously. The state of Georgia, Secretary of State's office has made a determination that they will not use the new voting machines for the November election. Uh, they will, they are planning to, uh, do a pilot in ten counties. Uh, they have not, uh, released what counties are gonna be included in that pilot. The Board of Registration Elections will be meeting on Thursday. Um, and it's anticipated that they may release, uh, who those ten counties are. I can tell you candidly that there is discussion that Fulton County may be included. And if so, um, I think they will be available to providing a sample, uh, machine.
I'll, I'll follow Mr. Walker there. Because I guess the state, the state is designating the location, the state is designating the county and then the county designates the locations within the county. Is that our words?
No, I thought you were talking about the use of the new voting machines that is mandated by the state.
The state does that?
Yes, correct.
What I'm asking is the state, the state selects ten counties. But then within that county, because Fulton County is a huge county, is it the county that decides where the test machines go? Or does, or does the state decide that? I wanna know who to lobby to get this machine in South Fulton.
Yeah, I don't wanna get too far out there because, like I said, it's unknown, speculation at this point. Uh, but it's, it's, uh, probable that with the new machines, the county, if they determine to use them, it will be a county-wide application.
Okay, and then this is just a point of information. The, um, the IGA specifies that the, uh, we, the city, one of our responsibilities is to review the ballot pools. I'm assuming, is that the clerk's office, who in our city will review the ballot pools?
We will.
And then, so if anyone has any, I don't know, like a candidate's like, oh, my name is misspelled, the clerk's office is who in basis?
Yes, and that will be done before the actual ballots are printed. We will get a sample ballot. And, um, we will go over it and send it out to the candidates and make sure the names are correct before the final ballot is printed.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Rowland?
I would like, uh, this, um, IG, IGA to say up to five hundred and twenty-seven because if we don't go into a runoff, we won't pay that. Correct? Because the first portion of this is three hundred and sixty thousand and additional was sixty-six?
We have to pay the amount, um, that, that, do we have to pay the five hundred and twenty-seven thousand?
No matter what?
No matter what. And if there's not a runoff, we will get the refund back.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this IGA.
The property move to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes. Next.
Next item, next item, council, a pool of resolution consenting to expansion of Fulton Industrial Community Development District.
I make a motion to approve, um, expanding the Fulton Industrial Community Improvement District.
Second.
The property move to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
No dissent.
Oh, without one, uh, one note for Mr. Kalid.
Next item. Council approval of agreement for South Fulton Revenue Enhancement.
I make a motion to approve agreement for the South Fulton Revenue Enhancement. Second.
Property move to second, any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Lu.
So, when did we decide we were gonna, uh, enter into, uh, is this a proposal or we entering into an agreement with Denmark and Future?
We got this presentation several months ago.
I think I was out on F M L A when they did this.
Yeah, we did a presentation. And this is, uh, additional, uh, scope work relative to, uh, recouping money that we could.
I believe it was in a budget here.
Excuse me, she still has the floor.
It was an actual presentation that was done by one of her colleagues.
I recall me being out on F M L A when it came before the council, it was in December, when it came before the council, I think. But my question is, did we check into any other services? Is this the only service that does Denmark and Future?
Nope, they've been quite successful with College Park.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, one note.
Yeah, one note.
Next item. Council approval of resolution for Census Task Force.
I move to approve the resolution for Census, uh, for the twenty twenty Census Ta- Task Force.
Property move to second, any discussion, Ms. Gillian?
There are a couple of things I understand. So it says that, um, the council members are appointed, consists of three council members that's good, and up to eight city residents appointed by the council. And then when I turn it over, there's only five.
Yeah, we can put member, member, but it's specific.
I'm, I'm not finished.
Excuse me, excuse me, you have, you have the floor. You're gonna take your question too.
Yeah.
No, we can't hear her.
I didn't, I didn't.
You can't hear you.
I didn't make a question. I'm just bringing up the topics that I have, um, some things with. And so then it says additional members, and one would be a secretary from the Department of Community Affairs. One would come from G I S. All this would be under the, um, city manager's office. But then it says that with the exception that they shall hold at least one regular meeting every month from April of twenty eighteen to April of twenty nineteen. So, uh, yeah, that, that must be an error of some kind. And then it goes on to say, um, um, that there is an attached exhibit, which is Exhibit A, which is not attached. Then it talks about a workforce board on the checklist that we do not have. And then there's no fits. So I've got, I've got issues with all of that.
Well, you said you would just make a statement. Are there now questions? Because there's no legislation.
All right, Ms. Gillian, are you finished?
Yes.
Mr. Kalid?
I, uh, actually, my Councilwoman Gillian's last question is my only question. And that is, I do not see if this will, that, uh, staple this. I went to, I guess, the inaugural meeting. And I remember several, um, several members of our staff being. several members of our staff being recruited on the spot to do things with this task force. So, I'm, I'm just not clear on what we are financially obligating ourselves to in doing this, especially since the U.S. Census Bureau, um, has been tasked with doing this, and I know that their budget has been less than it, than it has been in the past, and there were some census issues or whatever, but, um, so are we augmenting, are we augmenting that force? I'm just, I'm not clear with this, what this board is going to do and how much it is going to cost our city.
Can I, can I ask you anything?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So essentially, we've already started this process. What we are essentially doing is establishing a count committee. Every city, um, throughout Georgia, um, has been encouraged to establish a count committee. We have had a presentation twice, one, um, from Reverend Tillman, and then we also had Census Bureau to come here. And all of these attachments that you all saying you never received, you did receive because you received a folder which outlined where we should be throughout the process. Now, there is a typo, um, in it, um, Attorney Walker. And the typo is, is should, these activities should span throughout twenty twenty. And as far as the budget relates, Mr. Don has assigned the, uh, count committee activities to the Communications Department. So when the Communications Department bring forth a twenty twenty budget, she will have, uh, a line item that will be, um, the, the twenty twenty budget will have a line item proposed for how much money she thinks she will need in order to carry out the twenty twenty census activities. So we have already started having our task force meeting. In every city, the chair of the twenty twenty committee is the mayor. All of this was outlined in the training. Several of you, several of you all did not attend the initial count committee training. But several, several of you all did, and after the training, there was a presentation forwarded to everyone who attended the training. So we have had three meetings. The task force has already started convening. We have already started planning activities. And essential staff is being pointed out in this ordinance to be included on the task force in order to be able to crowd different members in the community. We're just starting with the task force. This is going to be a humongous effort throughout the city. And yes, the federal government does have their part, their plan in it as well. But we are a local government and we all have our part, we must play in it. And so all five hundred and thirty-eight cities in Georgia has been charged to create a, um, a count committee. And all of these documents, if you just read the folder that was given to all of us, when they came before us and presented, you will see all of it.
Okay, Ms. Wong.
All of us got folders.
Ms. Wong.
Let me say this, uh, this census count is so critical for our city. And I, I don't want us to rush and not get it right. So I've heard with this Councilwoman Gilliard, and I agree, I have some of the same questions. And relative specifically, uh, to the fact that some of us did give names of individuals. So when I read the task force, it did not seem like it was the same thing as the complete count committee. So I want to understand how it's all working together from the essential staff to the complete count committee. And so I don't think, I think we are going to naturally move forward with something, but we need to have it all laid out so it's clear. That, that's my only suggestion. I, and again, the members, I think every council person at least sent a representative, because we had up to three. So how does that work together relative to this particular committee?
I would say that, I'm sorry, I would say because it is so important to all of us, to the city, to all of our, our residents, uh, that I would like to see if you do it the proper way, if there's, if there's some discussion that we need to have. I would suggest we hold it until we pull all this together and move forward.
Now, we can, I agree, we should hold it, but the activities will not hold, we're still moving forward, we're still meeting, we're still planning activities. Thank you.
Can you do that?
Yes, um, forward to some, I moved to hold.
Second. Property move is second, I then hold.
Excuse me, but how, how did us win?
To, to, uh, a presentation is brought back, so we see the big thing.
I would like to hold it until we have a fist. I, I don't.
I wouldn't get a fist, so put it back next meeting.
Okay.
It could be the fifth, and I want to see the hand off fists together, so next meeting.
I just told it about the next meeting.
Thank you.
All in favor? That passes. Go ahead.
Next item is the first reading of amending an ordinance Title Eight Traffic and Vehicles.
Which one is it, uh, first reading?
Number eighteen.
This is the first read, but I, I would like to mention that everyone has to be given a, uh, book. The Blue Line Book, which has all of the information and the statistics in it. And so, uh, I would like to ask for you all to read, uh, through the material. Uh, Lieutenant Shoemaker and, um, empty letters will be available next, uh, council meeting. Uh, the second reading for any questions, to entertain any questions, or add also, uh, give a presentation. Uh, I'm excited about this legislation, this legislation will essentially place cameras throughout all, um, school zones throughout the city of South Fulton. And also those cameras will have the capability to, uh, install, have, uh, tag readers installed as well.
All right. Okay, next.
I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is just a, uh, before, before it comes back, uh, actually, I, I agree with the legislation theory. Um, there is, the legislation does mention agents, uh, which would be third parties. And I do, I am aware that in several states, their Supreme Courts are hearing cases now about whether or not third-party agents are, the, the, the enforceability of those devices being operated by third-party agents is being challenged in other states. And I don't know what the stare decisis is for Georgia, but I, I would like to just get a briefing on that.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question responding to the plea. Uh, so this book there is tab, and if you read, uh, on the tab there, it is state law. So there has been recent legislation passed in the General Assembly between, um, the last General Assembly that will allow us to enforce what we're passing. So that's why I ask, you know, police try to go, so state law is what we're governed by.
So, so again, in, in Iowa, the case is Marla Leaf, it's, uh, them et al versus Cedar Rapids. So they had a state law that allowed it, the Supreme Court then overturned it. And so there is, there is discussion in the legal community about whether or not specifically third-party vendors can write legally enforceable things on behalf of the state. So I just want to get a legal review of that.
All right. Did you get it, Ms. Wong, go ahead. Ms. Wong.
This is a question of the chief. I know we've had a, a number of meetings about, um, camera enforcement. This is specific to school zones. Can you kind of tell me where that is and, um, kind of why they didn't necessarily bury together, kind of where we are in that process?
Well, what's happened is we've put up test cameras in certain school zones and we've been able to determine that in one particular school zone, I think we had, um, over nine hundred speeders in one day, uh, going through a school zone. And so, uh, what this legislation does, and to the Councilwoman Gilliard's point, um, the legislation has been challenged with respect to camera enforcement and issuing those citations, but it's been granted in school zones. And that's the only area right now where permissible, uh, would be within school zones. And so, uh, what we've been careful not to do is allow those, that third party to pin us down to a particular number because we actually have to certify the violations within the police department. And once we look at the violations, we'll say, yes, that's a definite violation, and we'll go back. Uh, and then they'll issue the citation on our behalf. And so we don't allow them to set a number where you have to do twenty percent of, of our violations over the court, because that amounts to a quota. And so we try to stay clear of those sort of things, but the language here, uh, avoids all of that. And so I think, uh, what you're referring to in that, uh, particular case law is, um, it was overturned with respect to general cameras, but it's been allowed in school districts throughout the country.
Good point, thank you, sir. Okay, uh.
I have a follow-up question.
Go right here.
Um, so can you speak to, uh, the IGA with Fulton County Schools? Is there any enforcement going, and how does that impact?
It's basically the same thing because it's tied to schools. Uh, there is the stop-arm camera that, uh, as you approach a school bus, that stop-arm comes out and it has cameras on the side. If you pass that school bus, uh, it takes a picture of your, uh, tag, um, in the back. They send it to us, we certify, but it's only related to school zones. And the Supreme Court has said that's okay.
So, so we're still good on that and we are enforcing on that currently?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well.
Ms. Wong, go right here.
One more thing I would like to add, um, I, um, we've been working on this for a minute. And thank you Shoemaker for, um, Lieutenant Shoemaker for all your hard work and research on this. Uh, I would like to mention, I remember us having several presentations about these, uh, cameras in the school zones. But the last presentation we had, which was wild like this, uh, was the cameras being placed on the school buses. Now, the thing about that is, say something happens to that particular school bus. And you have a switch out of the school bus, then you no longer have that camera on that school bus. With these cameras, these cameras are going to be stationary in school zones. And so we'll be able to maximize enforcement. And, uh, this is a clear message, I think this is going to be a big thing for South Fulton, that we care about our kids safe.
And the good thing about this, uh, state legislation, and, and it was challenged most recently in Tennessee, Councilman, and that's why it was, it was upheld, and it's expanding throughout the country at this point, um, is that the, the revenue that's generated can only be used for law enforcement. So what we're looking to do is to expand our radar capabilities. We'll be putting radar signs in certain areas where, uh, people have prop, issues with speeding. We'll look at putting tag readers along our challenging corridors like Campbellson Road, uh, Fulton Industrial, and South Fulton Parkway, along with, um, Old National as well. So it's going to help fund a lot of those cameras, uh, public sector cameras that are much needed right now.
Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Burt?
Next item. First read of, of an ordinance to amend section two point one four, compensation and expenses of the City Count, City of South Fulton Charter entitled one, chapter three, mayor and council of the city code ordinances.
I think that, uh, we discussed that in, of your opinion, that this is the first read?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the real vote there, Madam?
Yes.
All right, next.
Next item is council approval of final ethics report on George Lawson Jr. and Tiffany C. Sellers versus Amelia Walker, complaint number two oh nine, twenty nineteen dash oh one.
I move that we, uh, the council, hold on a minute, so.
What do we ask for, dismissal of the vote?
You will have to approve or deny.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Second. Property move is second, any further discussion? Did you read? Okay, are they all in favor? Go ahead, all in favor?
Are you happy? Oh, yes.
Add, that's approved now.
Mr. Mayor, council that ends their council meeting?
Well, I, I think they have a date that they'll, Lawson and the council, um, I can either tell it now or I can show it in the mail tonight, it's your preference.
For that part, it'd be a, uh, executive session if you may.
I'm sorry, I'm in, I'm in before. I'm sorry? Yeah, I won't disclose any, um, information that I think is confidential, but I do know there's been public releases to the media, um, the constituents may be concerned, the council will be to address it firsthand if not.
Yes, please, yes.
Okay, so as everyone's aware, um, we're, it, you may not be aware, but there's been a recent buzz that a motion for contempt was filed against the city council alleging that they did not comply with a order that was entered in one of the cases with Judge Sellers, um, involving her termination back in March. So the motion for contempt was filed by Sellers the afternoon before the July Fourth holiday last week. The city has still not been served, um, in that action, but since the filing, there has been a lot of buzz that's leaked to the media. There's been all kinds of allegations that I've seen in the media that the council was held in contempt, that, um, council members were being punished by the court, et cetera. Um, I would just like to clarify that that is not accurate information. We received a notice of hearing yesterday at twelve fifty-nine P M. Um, immediately thereafter, I myself, um, went into response mode. Um, I pulled in members of my law firm. We worked on nothing but that issue. We filed a twenty-four-page memorandum to the court explaining to the court that the mayor and council had not committed any wrongdoing and, um, that the petition that was filed against them was misleading. It was not, uh, legally, legally accurate. So we provided that memorandum to the court and we provided an alternate proposed solution. And we asked, uh, the court to deny the contempt in full, to release and relieve the council members from any responsibility for going to court. After we filed that document, um, today, Judge Sellers filed a, um, or submitted a brief in response, asking the court to still require the mayor and council to come to court, um, to hold them in contempt.
You're, you're saying mayor and council.
Well, ma, well, mayor, you are the mayor and council for legal purposes. So you are not a part of the proceedings, uh, for the removal, but for legal purposes, you do constitute the mayor and council. Um, and the action is against the city council, which incorporates you as well. So I'm pleased to announce that about an hour ago, an order came out from the Superior Court. The motion for contempt has been denied in its entirety. The mayor and council are not required to appear in court. And, uh, we did request attorney's fees, um, I will say Sellers requested attorney's fees as well. And the judge said she is not going to issue attorney's fees. But the, the good news is that the mayor and council have never been held in contempt and that the court is not going to require their appearance on the contempt action.
Thank you.
But if we have specifics, you may want to consider that for executive session discussion.
That's fine, but you just gave specifics to the ordinance. And my question is, do you have any paperwork saying that we don't have, do you have any dismissal paperwork saying we do not have? Because I received an email today saying that we got to be in court on Thursday at eleven o'clock, I mean, uh, at four o'clock. And so do you have any dismissal paperwork saying we don't?
Yeah, whoever sent that to you was falsely advising you, we have an order, we have an order that was entered today.
Excuse me, uh, Madam Trump, I think before you get too far into this, if you want to have some other things at executive session, I would prefer that you do that. Yes, right now. Okay. And I, and I'm, I'm assuming that this is in part of her monthly report, am I correct? Because I don't see it on the agenda.
No, because she's providing updates.
Mr. Mayor, I, 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 Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, may I tell you something? Going to order, we, this, this entire council having drug in the media, and it has made national news. And, and for, and for us not, for us, for the attorney not to be allowed to thoroughly explain on camera and before the audience what has happened, you know, I, I just think that's, and then for me to find out about this in the media, what I know what's going on, I feel like it's fair for me to ask a simple question. Do you have any paperwork saying that we don't have to appear in court tomorrow?
That's a simple yes or no question.
That's a reasonable question.
When you say yes or no to that.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you please say this? Yes.
Ms. Wong.
Uh, Attorney Walker, thank you for that information. I, I do think, uh, because this is, uh, it's not, no longer just local news, we need to make sure our communication persons receives the facts of the case, and we have to take control of our own nearness, so that needs to happen post fix.
Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, excuse me. Go ahead.
So, so City Manager, can you direct the communications director to issue some of the effects? Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next. Mr. Malazi.
Please, the mayor and council, before, while they are looking for the presentation, I have got three updates that I wanted to check with you. I think you just approved the payment of the five hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars for the November election. You may need to know that only hundred and sixty thousand dollars was budgeted, so we will be having short for, of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the, the good thing is that the November is happening in the new fiscal year, so we are going to pay, repay the expenditure for the next year. So we don't need budget amendment, but we are having four hundred and fifty thousand less than what was budgeted, but we are going to prepare because we have to pay now by August. Just your update. The second one is the, on twenty-third of July, we'll be having an outline of URA plan so that we can have the money. On twenty-seventh, twenty-third, we'll have detail of the URA plan. And lastly is the, on Motel Motel. One of the things that the auditors wrote us up is that we did not use money in the year where we saved for Motel Motel. And that money, we need to use it before September thirty-first. So whatever area that money is to be used, we have to have used that for last year and this year. We have a problem of finding money, but here is a problem of how to use it. So just make sure economic development and all parties that are involved to spend that money before thirtieth of September. We have, combined last year and this year, we have more than two hundred thousand dollars. And we need to finish that by before September, or else we'll be in trouble with the statute statutes.
Okay. Go ahead. Could you just briefly let us know if you know what other things we can spend that two hundred thousand dollars?
So you have the accent, I think there was a percentage that we need to spend money on that. We have, we don't have conventional center, but you can use money in the tourism industries. And you can use that money in the economic development. I have been, we are discussing with Mr. Pike. He has got a list of where he can spend that money and the, Dr. Rauvadi, some areas where to spend that money. But we have to spend that money before September the thirtieth. It's over two hundred thousand dollars.
Tourism. Tourism. The money that we get from Motel Motel. I would, I would ask if it would be possible for you to send a memo out just detailing what constitutes tourism, what are some, city council may have some ideas as well. I understand that other people have ideas, but we might have some ideas. But we just want to make sure that those ideas fall within the acceptable parameters. So if you could just send a memo out advising us some of the things, or examples of some things that we can spend that money on, I'm sure that our residents who are listening might have some ideas. Thank you.
So we have our main comparison of what we budgeted and what we have received so far. So this is the first, the first tip that you have is for revenues. That is showing where our main revenues are. Fifty percent of our revenues are coming from property taxes. And the second biggest portion of our revenues from sales tax. The second area we have is all expenses. The biggest expenses is in public safety. And public safety is both fire as well as police. Public safety, as you all know, that is the top priority and both, are both the priorities of use twenty nineteen as well as twenty twenty is public safety. So that's where our investments are. So almost fifty, more than fifty percent of our expenses, closer to fifty percent, are in public safety, are centered by the government, general government. This is a summary of expenses paid department, every department. So as of end of May, our expenses are about thirty-seven percent, as I've been talking about. Expenses are going up. Revenues are slowing down. And the biggest expenses that we had so far in the fiscal year is the twelve million dollars that we paid in December. So we are at zero, even though we have not finished, but that's the biggest expenditure that we have. And here is a summary of revenues where we were last year in May and where we are this year in May. You see that property tax in May last year, we had fourteen million dollars. In this year, we have more than that is true of what we had last year. Then we get into franchise fees. We had the three hundred and forty-one thousand last year in May. Now we have almost seven times, two million dollars. And we have in-laws taxes, seventeen million dollars this year by May. Last year, we had the sixteen million dollars. In other ways, we had the revenue this year about fifty-six million dollars. Last year, by this time, we had about thirty-five million dollars. Expenses this year, we have for the six million dollars, by this time last year, we had twenty-three million dollars. At the end of May, we had more revenues of ten million dollars compared to last year, we had revenues of twelve million dollars, but you remember, we had not yet paid the, our, uh, ten. We had not yet paid twelve million dollars. So this year, we have ten million dollars end of May after paying our ten or twelve million dollars. Questions and comments?
Any questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Madam.
Next item is City Manager's report.
Very brief report. You have received the previous month's written document, but I did just want to highlight a few things. One, as of Monday, the City of South Fulton's boundaries are now active in Google Maps. I think you guys know that that's a very important aspect and something that the council has been asking for since early on in my tenure, and so we're proud to make that happen. And so now you can travel and find various places in South Fulton, Georgia, which is a big deal for us. Also, in compliance with the resolution on expanding the development of advanced medical services, we have released the RFP for the medical feasibility study as of today, and so we hope to bring something back to you there. Also, the city will be participating in the Department of Community Affairs, Community Housing Program. We were one of the ones selected, and so this program helps to, or helps communities improve their quality of life and economic vitality through local housing strategy. So it's really technical assistance as you start to change your zoning plan, your land use, and all of those activities. DCA will provide training and insights into how we can do that. So we've received that support. I think it's also good for us to highlight that, and these things were in Mr. Malazi's report, but to kind of put them in layman's terms, we have, in partnership with our elected officials, more than doubled the property taxes collected, increased franchise fees by seven hundred percent, and increased the local option sales tax collected by about seven, well, about eight percent. And so we've done all of that while actually only expending about sixty percent of projected expenditures. And so you know, if you collect more money but spend less, that's called good governance. And so that's good for our city, good for our staff, and good for our elected. And so that concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Donald or Mr. Malazi, when is our three-day retreat going to be scheduled?
I would go ahead. Well, not yet.
Ask again.
Who's responsible for scheduling our three, three days? That's a question to you or Mr. Donald. Who's responsible for scheduling our three-day retreat? I know Mr. Donald said some dates earlier, but we need to get that done.
So I'm not, I'm not familiar with the three-day retreat that falls under auspices of the city manager.
So you did it last year? We went down, we went to Athens.
So you're asking for an additional strategic plan retreat? Because that was, the purpose of that was to develop the strategic plan, which is coming to court.
So we're supposed to, no, we had, in the year before that you weren't here, we ended, we went somewhere else. So we, we meet, we have a two to three day retreat in order to establish our fiscal year priorities. We had a budget retreat to discuss budget priorities, but our, our priorities, overall priorities, we have not had a retreat. And I know there has been some dates thrown out, and according to the clerk's office, she said that she feels that we probably got the two into mingle. So when I-
Which may be the case. I mean, I don't have an answer for you there. I'm under the impression that your current strategic plan that you are evaluating will serve as the priorities for the city through twenty twenty-three. Is that not correct?
We always, we always have fiscal year priorities. We have fiscal year priorities for fiscal seventeen, we have fiscal year priorities for fiscal eighteen, we have fiscal year priorities for fiscal nineteen, and we need to have fiscal year priorities for twenty twenty.
So if you have a strategic plan that begins in twenty twenty, so if the strategic plan begins in twenty twenty and you're going to approve it in FY nineteen, you're going to have a separate FY twenty set of priorities outside of the strategic plan?
Well, our strategic priorities should be the umbrella, and then everything comes from that umbrella.
So that would mean that once you approve the strategic plan, you would follow up with a retreat. Is that correct?
Well, to establish our twenty twenty priorities, the strategic plan is a five-year plan. It's a five-year plan.
But if it's your umbrella, as you said, wouldn't you pass it before you had your follow-up? Is that-
Um, Mrs., I'm going to yield to Mr. Gilyard, but she's been on, she's been on the council all year about this.
Absolutely.
I, I, I think it more than likely would be a good idea. I think it would be a good idea if we would have the retreat and during the retreat, go over the strategic plan. I think that would be a real good. And I think that that's what the mayor talked about early on, but it was only for half a day. I think it's going to take longer than that. I really do.
So you are saying that after the strategic plan-
You get fit. No.
Before we finally adopt.
Before, before you adopt.
Before we adopt it, I think that we need to have a retreat to go over it, to have a long discussion about it, and that will therefore, and then we can even compare it to the retreat that we had for the budget and, and kind of see where we are there and how all that lines up. Instead of doing it in isolation-
No, I think that's a great idea. I wasn't aware that that is fully what you wanted, so I just want to make sure that we deliver on what you're asking for. I just, if you just bear with me, I want to make sure I'm getting this correctly. What the council is requesting is a retreat to, before the strategic plan is adopted, to review it, compare it to the budget priorities that you just set. Ensure that all of those activities are incorporated, and at that time, you will approve the strategic plan, which will include all of the priorities.
Mr. Donald, this is not abnormal. If you call around to other cities with the same council, city council, city manager government, they all have retreats every year to do the same process. So I'm not asking-
I'm very aware. No, there's no pushback at all. I think you'll remember that I've sent out dates on multiple occasions for this three-day retreat that we've not been able to schedule. So I'm very clear on what everyone else does. I just want to make sure that what your ask is, is being delivered. And I think I'm clear now based on the conversation that myself and Ms. Gilyard just had.
Mr. Lee.
I want to ask some questions about parks. One is, what is the status of the Parks Master Plan RFP?
I believe that you were bringing back a recommendation on the Parks RFP, but the mayor had recommended that it be a part of a special call meeting because it's such a big deal to allow you guys to talk about it and, and explore it in more in depth. So I don't know if y'all scheduled it.
Lee, I thought that, you know, a regular meeting was not kind of, was to focus on it. I think it was that one, and what was, there was three things.
So I know that we were, so the strategic plan, we were bringing it back in this setting. Now, I know the mayor had suggested putting it on a special call meeting. I think from what I heard, you guys have pulled it off of the special call meeting and you want to have it as a part of a larger strategic planning retreat. And so I think the items were the strategic plan, the Parks Master Plan, and then a court operation. And so it, what may be helpful is to break those things out separately into three different conversations, but always will defer to the will of the council.
We had, we had you and you, I'm going to think of this word, to respond to, the request for the eighteen, so we didn't, we haven't gotten the, uh, format. But now that thing's not going to be just the one day, it's going to be one day each, three days? I don't know. We can figure that.
It was over the weekend, but the others?
I, 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 are you done? You also didn't mention in, in your report, and I just, I want to give props, that our parks, our Parks Patrol uniform's there.
I saw that, sir.
And if you're a school park on Friday, you can see them. I think they're incredible and exciting.
He was here.
He was here. I didn't, I didn't see him. Mr. Lee. Okay. It's clear, are you finished? Yes. Uh, Ms. Robb. Ms. Robb?
I'll say this, hopefully, whatever this retreat is, I, I don't know if we need three days, it will be challenging to me if you do it past the first weekend of this.
Oh, the school starts.
Exactly. A school, that game.
But.
Ms. Robb, are you finished?
No, I'm saying prior to would be great if we could get it scheduled.
Ms. Robb?
I know that, but I'm saying that's the next three to four weeks, but if it's a day and a half, that's a lot more manageable trying to figure out three or whatever. I don't know where we're planning to do this.
Hold up. You still have the floor. Are you finished, Ms. Robb?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Gilyard, go ahead.
I want to, I want to go in reverse a bit because we approved the resolution to enter into release agreement with Jones Bridge Road Associates during the consent agenda, but it referred to an appendix that wasn't included and didn't have a dollar amount in it, but we approved it. And I forgot that.
Okay. Now, do I understand, did we, did we, did we find, find out what we wanted to do with the three items that I had? I was a little bit confused. What did we want to do? We're going to abandon the, the special call meeting on July eighteen? Or you all talking about incorporating something, 'cause I'm not clear.
Mayor, I think what they were recommending, and I won't speak for the council, I'll have somebody clarify, what it sounded like is that they wanted more time for the strategic plan to be focused on it. So instead of having it on your special call meeting, remove the strategic plan and have a broader strategic planning meeting.
So the other two, stay on that? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to speak for the elected body, but-
What I, what I heard is that all three of them are going to be part of this three-day retreat. Oh, that's, that's what I- I just need to know. How, how we want to do it, huh? I, I just want to know because, you know, if we're going to ban-
Uh, I just wanna know because, you know, if we, if we're gonna abandon this idea of a special call meeting for those three things, I just need to know, and how are we gonna do it?
And I can't do that either.
Okay. Good, go ahead.
So the last time we did, it was over the weekend, so we're not interfered with anybody's working schedule. Um, it was like on a Friday, it was like on a Friday, Saturday, or we started on a Thursday, Friday, and we came back on a Saturday.
If it starts on Friday, I'm okay.
Okay. The other thing is, um, I would like to, I would like to recommend that we get, uh, including this retreat if we can, city managers with the same form of government to come and speak, uh, to the council. And this was a recommendation, uh, from some city managers that I, um, had an opportunity to talk with at GMA. And what they recommended that if, being that we are a young city, it would be good if we get city managers with the same form of government to come and give different perspectives on how the structure and how they, and how they want their governance.
Okay, I, I, I still want, could we, I still gotta give a question, Nancy, you know, on the three items.
If, if, I, I feel like, I hear, what I hear is that we wanna do these three items and maybe some more stuff over the three days. If we're all, if we're all here now, if we could just pull up our calendars in this moment and pick three days so that we do not have to revisit this discussion again.
So is it a budget retreat or is it everything?
It's a everything, it's a three-days-to-you-drop retreat. And we just need to pick the three days now so that we don't ever have to have this conversation like.
You need a fit. Need a fit, come on, it's too many.
This should be in the council city manager's budget.
Three days, oh my God.
How about the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth of July?
There's a, uh, what'd you say?
Twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth.
I gotta read them on the twenty-sixth.
Wait, twenty-sixth, why don't we do this?
No, we need to come up with a date, 'cause if we get away with it, it's not gonna happen.
Right, you're right. Okay, well, give us a date.
I have a zone. No, twenty-fifth.
Okay, so what's your recommendation?
Twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth.
I don't know.
The twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth.
Are there certain dates that work in there or don't?
Twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth.
I mean, I ain't about to, wow, I'm not available on that day. You're not available then?
I'm, I'm all right. When it get back, when it get back, when it get back. I'm all right, twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth.
Because I'm not available.
The twenty-ninth?
The Sunday.
We really don't wanna know that day. Twenty-sixth. What are we saying now?
What about twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh?
No, he's out of country.
He's on vacation.
What about the following?
We can't do it the following.
We can't do it the following.
That's everybody's back to school stuff.
What about the, what about the ninth, the ninth, the eighteenth?
No.
What about the ninth, the tenth?
What about the nineteenth?
What about the ninth, the tenth, the ninth?
I can't do the ninth.
What?
Did anybody made?
What about the?
I knew we were gonna be in.
Hold on, what about the sixteen?
Can we talk about it, baby?
Right. Sixteen is good. That, that, that would, uh, deal with personnel exec, I mean, um.
Sixteen is, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Yes, that's fine.
Wait, does that work for you?
No, because you're sitting.
Fifteenth is not gonna be.
Um.
I can't do that.
City manager, are we able to discuss this in the past?
Can we discuss this in the past?
Question is actually four hours.
City attorney, are we able to discuss this in the past?
This is August.
Awesome.
August twenty-third.
Oh, I'm sorry.
City clerk, can you hold on?
Hold on, no, no, 'cause we don't answer when we call. Everybody's saying August fifteenth, what about August fifteenth, sixteen, the seventeenth? Everybody's saying that.
Now, school, school starts back on the twelfth. That's the first week of school.
That's the week.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, I'm happy to.
What are we talking about the weekend, Catherine?
August the twelfth.
Yeah, that's the first one.
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Okay, she said sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
I can't do the eighteen.
No, we're in August, we're in August.
I'm cool, I'm cool. Sixteen, seventeen, yeah, I'm cool.
Wait, I'm sorry, I, I do want a question.
I would, I would tell you not to decide right now.
Well, what, I do, I do, I, I do wanna ask a timing. I, I do, I do just wanna ask a, I do just wanna ask a timing question because there is, uh, some of the things that we're talking about, discussing, will have an effect on our twenty-twenty budget. And we do have a budget calendar hearings. So if there is, so, so again, I would ask, and I think I asked this before in our, in our last budget meeting, um, when is the latest that we can have this meeting where it will not disturb the three public budget hearings that we have to have?
So if you remember, last night I sent you an email talking about the, what's happening with our tax digest.
Right.
I was going to have something today, they didn't. I should have something tomorrow to update you, but by the second of August, we are supposed to send our merit rate to the, uh, tax commission. So we will be working backwards. Second, then we will have, what we'll do like we did last year, we'll have one public hearing, then the two public hearings will do it one day. And we have to do that before the second of August. And the two meetings have to be one week in between. In other words, we need ten days to complete those two public hearings.
So you're saying the latest we can have is August second, or if we?
The second we should avoid, the, the second we should avoid, they pass the merit rate. We should have sent it to the county by the second.
At the latest.
Well, what about, what about, what about Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday in July?
I can any time in July.
Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Anytime in July, just August.
We can't do that, we can't.
That's next week. I think we should do that last, last week, we have majority. I mean, I'm not trying to ask. But you can tell your priorities in the budget, you know what I mean?
You know, we're not gonna get to a point where everybody gonna be everywhere.
The twenty-ninth, the thirty-first, is that? What's the twenty-ninth, the thirty, the thirty-first?
Oh, yeah, I do that a lot.
Okay, that's Monday, that's the last Monday, Tuesday, Monday.
Last Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, twenty-nine, July?
Twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-first.
I have to take off, but I can do that.
Yes.
See, it's the same thing.
It works.
So what day is?
Can't do it, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay.
She's not okay with you going.
I just won't be.
The mayor's not available.
I can do a Friday or Saturday.
You know, in fairness, we started off with the majority on the weekend on that first July.
In fairness, we ended up on the sixteenth of August.
So the second?
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not trying, we just may not.
That had something to do with.
Second of August, we should avoid it past the merit rate.
Well, we can't go past August second.
Well, we can't, we can't go past August unless we intend to raise the merit rate. If we don't have intentions of raising the merit rate, we can go past August.
So here, here's the catch. Merit rate, we are not planning to move it from eleven point five seven nine. However, every year you have roll back. And roll back brings it to neutral. So anytime you move from neutral to get into eleven point five seven nine, that's an increase. You don't have to increase, uh, merit rate from eleven point five seven nine to be called the increase. Roll back, that means it gets back. Then if you go back to that one, that's an increase, you need three public hearings. So we have all this? Yes.
So we still have to look at July?
So it's a hundred percent that we'll have three public hearings. And that's in addition to budget hearings.
So we gotta do July.
What are you doing? I recognize.
So it looks like your council was already looking at the seventeenth, the eighteenth for the mayor's special call meeting.
Can't do the eighteen.
Got it. So what if we look at that week, or even if it's just the sixteenth and seventeenth? It, does it have?
What about the nineteenth and twentieth?
I think.
I'll be out.
Can we get a majority and go be? How about the twenty-first and the twenty-second?
Yeah, I mean, I, it, it may work if you look at two days.
Twenty-first and twenty-second.
But, um, we got a special, you can't do twenty-first and twenty-second.
I, I think if, if the council could commit to a two-day versus three-day retreat, maybe staff can coordinate, we can commit to coordinate tomorrow if everybody commits to respond. And if it's two days, then I think we can find a time that everyone can be there.
Two days. But he said he can do anything in July.
Unless it's the weekend.
What about, the mayor said he might not.
No, the lawyer said he could do stuff on the weekend.
What?
Twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh.
Does that work? Okay.
Twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh.
Oh, Jesus.
It took us longer to do that to get. Okay?
Is that okay, two, twenty-sixth?
All right, we got it, we got it.
I mean, y'all got, I won't be there.
So you're not gonna be there?
No.
That's right. Well, he gonna send us up.
Listen, you a child of mine.
Okay. Vanclerk?
Oh, I, um, I, I, uh, moved that we go into executive session for real estate personnel and, um, real estate personnel and, um, litigation.
There's seconds? No second? Second?
I'd like to make motion to adjourn.
Yeah. I'd like to get the motion, I can't do it. Can I get a show of hands even? All right. End of turn.